Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the council committee of a whole meeting for June 3rd, and if we could, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Right.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Uh, Councilmember Spitzley has an excused absence. I not heard from Councilmember Dunbar, so I'm assuming she'll be here later. Um, with that, Vice President Spatafor, we have the minutes for May 20th.
Madam President, I move the approval of the minutes for May 20th, 2019.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. At this time, this is an opportunity for public comment. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment at this time, if you could please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment at this time?
A couple of things. One is the potential override of the mayor's veto of the position for the neighborhood and development. Again, as many of you have said, it's nothing personal, but I can tell you that overwhelmingly, the commentary I hear from people in public and from on Facebook and other sources is consistently the same, and it is, we do not want to spend one dime on anything other than what we have to, and fixing the roads, getting police, getting fire, getting code compliance, getting parks and rec in shape, et cetera, et cetera. They're not in favor, unfortunately, of even things like the facade grants and all of those other smaller items that were put into the budget this year, and I know you reduced several of those by half or whatever. But even on, in those instances, the majority of people, they are saying very clearly and loudly, not a dime till these other things are fixed. No new initiatives, no new expenditures, no salary raises, no more money for anything else but these things. Secondly, just to touch back on the Scott Sunken Garden, since there are people here today especially for the Board of Water and Light for that, I'll reiterate some of my comments from earlier. In the past, we had a serene, secluded, silent, shaded, and sheltered Scott Garden. That is no longer the case. Now, we have a stark, sunny, surrounded by parking lots and pathways, shadeless, and sound drenched Sunken Garden. The historic sedums, the heritage peonies, the mature woody trees and shrubs, pond grasses, all were lost, in spite of the Board of Water and Light consistently saying that only 1% of the plant vegetation was lost in the transfer. That's just not accurate. Much more than 1% of the original plantings were lost in the transfer. Now, out of the things they did transfer, most of those did survive. A lot of the material going into the new garden, though, is new material. Last week, when I stopped by there, most of the original transplants that were in the coolie beds still were in the coolie beds, and the garden looked to be about 95% full, and it was new material that it was full of. So, the question is, where does the money come from to pay for these new materials, and how does the Board of Water and Light explain the fact that they are buying in new stock rather than using all of the existing old stock, and what happened to change things? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one, we will move into our agenda. The first thing that we have on the agenda is Capital Area District Library Annual Presentation, and so we would welcome you to come to the table. There's additional chairs that are there behind you, and if we could, when you're ready, make sure that the green light is on, on the mic, so that we're all able to hear you.
All right, there it goes.
There we go.
Wow, now I can really hear my voice.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Scott Dimeshaw. I'm the Executive Director of the Capital Area District Libraries, and with me is Melissa Cole. She's the Head Librarian of the South Lansing Branch, and Jean Bolli. She is the Head Librarian of the Foster Branch. And also, we have three board members as well. We have our Board Chair, Deb Boomequist, Board Member Marge Bosenberry, and Board Member Vern Johnson as well. There's usually four of us here. We had a tragedy at the library. Our Head Librarian at the Downtown Lansing Branch passed away unexpectedly. It was a tragedy for us, and some of the things that I'm going to talk about tonight were projects that Michelle Bresso, the Head Librarian, started there, and she had some scheduled for 2019 that were continuing in her honor as well. You'll see from the annual report that was given to you, 2018 was a very big year for us. There were two major projects. The first was our operating millage. It went out to the voters in August of 2018. I'm happy to report that for the City of Lansing, it passed by 74%. That was one of the highest percentage, passage percentages throughout our service area. And then the other big initiative for us in 2018 was our 20th anniversary. So, that's the 20th anniversary of the Lansing Public Library and the Ingham County Library System coming together to form the Capital Area District Library. When you look back 20 years, in 1998, when we were formed, our mission was a lot about access, and so we were the gatekeepers of information, and we expected people to come to us. When you look back 20 years later of where we were and where we currently are, in 2018, our mission transformed into empowerment of our communities. And we take that empowerment aspect very actively. It talks about what we do and all the services that we provide. And so, how do we do this? For our Lansing libraries, we circulated close to half a million items. We had around 400,000 visits to our three Lansing locations, and one of our most popular services that we provide is the technology in our branches, and that technology is the public computers that we have, and the technology is also the Wi-Fi access that we have in our branches, not only in our branches, but also that goes out to the surrounding areas of our libraries as well. In 2018, we upgraded all of our public computers, and then in 2019, we're working on a project to actually strengthen our Wi-Fi access in our libraries and also outside of our libraries as well. One of the most popular things that I talked about at my annual report last year was our mobile hotspots. Those continue to be very, very popular. We have over 100 in our circulation system right now. What those allow are individuals can, for two weeks, have Wi-Fi access in their homes with the cellular mobile hotspots. Again, they've been very popular. We've actually heard back from individuals that it might not work so well at their home, so we've gone with different cellular providers, and we've had, that's having a great impact on the users. Going forward, technology is going to be very important in libraries, especially in 2020. The census is happening in 2020, and it's going to be administered online only. What that means is people without access to technology are going to be very reliant on public libraries to participate in the U.S. Census. So, we're working with our staff right now to get staff onboard so that they're comfortable when individuals come in and they need assistance in the 2020 census. Now, we know that it isn't just having access to technology. Also, instructing individuals on how to use technology is very, very important. One of our initiatives in 2018 was digital literacy and coding. What we have done for coding is partnered with area organizations to offer coding workshops for students, and you might ask, why is that important? We feel it's important because it's preparing students for the 21st century job market, where those skills are going to be needed. It's not that everyone is going to go out and become a computer programmer, but it's going to be essential for the skills that are needed in any type of workforce. So, for the Downtown Lansing Branch in particular, they partnered with Sexton High School to have a Girls Who Code program. The Girls Who Code is a national, nationwide initiative of closing the gender gap in tech fields. And so, what our staff at Downtown Lansing did is worked with Sexton High School to offer a five-week course for girls who wanted to participate in this. It was a very successful program. We saw the success in that, so we actually took another program back to our Downtown Lansing Branch, and it was a code camp that we did with MSU Computer Science Department, and that was, again, a five-week code camp that we offered to 30-plus kids. And what they learned was, it's called Python. It's a high-level, general-purpose coding language, and they were actually able to learn that throughout the five-week course. Now, digital literacy is just a component of literacy. Our kind of bread and butter and purpose of the library is helping with literacy, especially with early child development literacy, and at Foster, at Downtown Lansing, and at our South Lansing Branch, we specialize in having storytimes for children, babies, preschool children, and families as well. And what we try to accomplish in those storytimes is to practice the five early literacy practices of read, write, talk, sing, play. You've heard a lot in the news, especially about the read-by-grade-three law, about the importance of literacy and reading proficiency by the end of third grade. Ingham ISD has reached out to the library to partner on several initiatives so that we can help with the community and help parents get an understanding of how they can work with their children to build those early literacy skills. And one of the things that we did is, we worked with Ingham ISD to have our early literacy calendar for parents and children. And what this calendar does is you can go through it day by day, and it has early literacy practices that parents can walk through with their children. We also do many programs at the library that specialize in literacy. One of the things that we preach is read to your child at least 20 minutes a day, or when they're able to read, have them read for 20 minutes a day. What that does is, by the time they're in the sixth grade, they'll be exposed to 1.8 million words, have read for just over 800 hours, and when they're in the sixth grade, they'll have a 90% success rate as a student. And those numbers are huge. So, what we feel the role at the library is to really stress that importance to parents. For the Downtown Lansing Branch, we also expanded our citizenship and immigration services. We have a three-part series that talks about applying and preparing for the citizenship exam, and then our local history department has had a pretty active role in partnering with the City of Lansing. We're currently partnering with the Paving the Way 496 Project as far as providing some historical images for the project. For the future going forward, we're going to expand on several of our popular services. One of that is our Library of Things collection. One thing that we just added to the Library of Things collection was CADA bus passes. So, and individuals can check out a 30-day bus pass to CADA, and we thought that it would be a nice convenience for individuals. We did not realize the impact that it would be making, and I just wanted to share a comment from someone. She said, "You guys are lifesavers. I was robbing Peter to pay Paul so I could afford to go to my dialysis. You guys not only saved me money, but you have may have saved my life. It was getting to the point where I was going to have to stop going because I couldn't afford transportation." That made a very big impact for us. We feel CADA is a very strong partner, and we were actually able to, after comments like this, expand that bus pass program as well. So, as we work towards the future, we're going to be expanding the successful services that we have, but we also see ourselves as an integral part of the community. So, I wanted to end before I turn it over to Melissa Cole to talk about South Lansing is to thank you for your support. Councilmember Wood, I know you promote the library programs quite a bit, and I want to thank you for that, and for all of you, get out, use the library. If you don't have a library card, go and get one, because you're already paying for it with your tax dollars, so you already are a member. You just have to go through the steps of visiting the library. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Melissa Cole, the head of the South Lansing Branch, as Scott already said. I'm going to highlight a few of our accomplishments for 2018. South Lansing continues to have high computer, printer, and fax usage. We offer book librarian services to our patrons so that they have access to one-on-one technology and resume help. We also have one-on-one citizenship help. One of the many patrons we help, we helped earned their associates from LCC by utilizing our computers and our book librarian service. He was an older patron that needed to improve his Excel skills for an accounting and restaurant management course. Our programming is continuing to grow. We had a 51% increase in attendance from 2017. By offering a variety of quality program, we are, programming, we are continuing to attract new patrons to the South Lansing Branch. In addition to our staple programming-like storytimes, we offer after-school science and art, curse of writing, game club, and board game nights, and a variety of performers and summer reading program, programs, like day camps. To exemplify how impactful our programming can be, we received a comment about our monthly code club. A patron wrote, "I want to compliment Cattell South Lansing Librarian Eel for teaching the monthly Saturday morning code club for kids. My son attended her sessions for over a year now, and it has really paid off. Recently, she had, he, she's been teaching him Python, and with this knowledge, my son was able to compete at the Regional Science Olympiad in the coding session. He was the only student from his school's team to, who knew the material." Another significant program is summer lunches. In 2018, we participated in the summer lunch program through the Lansing School District. We had great attendance, and many families came every day and every week. We had to add a day to accommodate the demand. This year, South Lansing will offer Monday, Wednesday, and Friday lunches, and Downtown will offer Tuesday and Thursdays. To make our library more inclusive and to reach out to more patrons, this summer, we'll be starting a sensory-friendly hour every second and fourth Saturday, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. These special hours are designed for an experience that limits the number of guests, includes quiet spaces, reduced sound sense, and lighting stimuli. We have also increased our reach in the community. In 2018, we have increased our outreach contacts by 42%. We have partnered with many organizations and schools. We have attended literacy nights, orientation, class visits, and so much more. It would take me like probably an hour to list everything we've done.
Don't forget harmony.
Oh, and harmony, yes, the Lansing Harmony Celebration. I believe the key to our great year is not only a fantastic community and fantastic library staff, but the welcoming feeling of the library. We redesigned our children's area to attract more families, and it has been a success. The children's area now features a play area, which is based on the five early literacy practices of every child ready to read, which Scott has already mentioned. Parents and caregivers can sit with their children and relax. It is a free place to go to keep their child entertained and learning. People stay longer and come more often. And also, we are currently having a friendly competition amongst the branches to see who can sign up and renew the most library cards between now and September. So, I want to encourage you to come to the South Lansing Branch to sign up or renew your library card. Thank you.
Thank you.
You better not go to the South Lansing Branch if you live on the east side.
Let me just say.
Friendly competition.
I'm Jean Bolli. I'm the head of the Foster Library. The most unique thing about the Foster Library is its location. We're smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood with all the benefits that that provides. We're on the garden level of the Foster Community Center. It's not the basement, thank you very much. And there has actually been a library presence in that building since it was converted to a community center in 1981. We've been in the current location since 1999. We pride ourselves on being friendly and a relaxed atmosphere and welcoming to everyone who comes in. We also have the advantage of having the playground outside, so lots of times, people will have come to the playground and decide to visit the library, or after they've been in the library for a while, they can go out and enjoy the playground. One of the things that we participated in this year was the Foster Library, or the Foster Community Center was celebrating the 100th birthday of the building. Actually, it was 102 years old, but they missed it two years ago. So, they had a big celebration with a block party, and we were very happy to be able to provide Link's Little Reading Railroad to give participant, or people who came, a ride around the block on Francis Avenue, and that was a big hit. We also helped them with gathering some history of the building, and our local history department provided them with a lot of good photos. Foster is small but mighty. We're obviously the smallest one in the city, but of the 13 libraries in the Cattell system, we're number eight in, in circulation, where we're one of the three smallest libraries in the system. So, we're pretty proud about that. Some of the other programs that we had that were fun and big successes, we had a ukulele strum, sing and strum last summer that filled our entire space with ukulele fans who had a great time. They were fans of all ages, I must say. We hosted a Nerf games program that took part, place in the gym. That was wild. And we started with some seed savings workshops late last summer that were a prequel to the seed library that we've started this year and has been greatly used, used so far this year. I have to thank you guys for the big event of the year, though. That was the reconstruction of the Foster parking lot. This was...
And Brett, take a bow.
Yes, yes. This was so needed and so appreciated. We had to relocate our book drop, and we had, for a couple of days, we had to use the teeny tiny door at the south end of the library space that nobody even knew functioned, to let people in and out for a while while the door, place in front of our main door was torn up. And we even provided curbside service to some of our patrons who couldn't walk far enough in to get to the library, but it was all worth it. The parking lot is wonderful and is greatly appreciated by staff and patrons alike, and I want to thank you as well for providing that for us.
Okay. Before I open it up for questions, in front of you, councilmembers, is a letter dated November 20th that came from Scott. Could you talk to us a little bit about the TIFA and the money that normally would go to that, and why the decision of the board to, to stop that?
Sure. So, that was a result of, there was legislation that was passed that protected library millages that were passed after, it was December 2016. So, any, any library millages passed after that date, they could not be captured by a taxing authority unless there was an agreement in place. And so, with our millage that was passed in 2018, our board discussed it, and...
Just to clarify, wasn't that millage just a renewal, the exact same?
Uh, it's, it's not just a renewal, so it actually is technically, the renewal is the rate, but it's technically a new millage. So, I'm sorry?
I'll wait.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, it's, and that was looked up by our lawyer and looked up by the president, by the executive of the Michigan Library Association. And so, with that passage, our, our board discussed whether to go into any agreements with taxing authorities, and our board decided not to make a decision on the specific projects, but to continue to have the funds that the voters agreed to go to the library, to go to the library. And so, that's something that we've always heard when we've, when we've gone out, we've talked to the voters on our millage, was that they wanted those funds to go to the library.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, the City of Lansing does pay for the rent at the South Side Library as well as give space at Foster. Is that correct?
Correct. So, with our agreements with the municipalities is that, you're the municipality, you provide the space, and we provide the library services. So, within that rent, you're providing the space for the libraries.
Okay. And the reduction that we're talking about is how much?
I'm sorry, the reduction?
Well, not being able to capture this is how much?
Uh, for you guys, I don't have that number on hand. I think it was $63,000, but again, I don't know the specific number.
Samantha, do you happen to know that number?
He's correct. It was 63,000.
62,000.
63, yeah. 63.
63?
63, correct.
Thank you. Okay. With that now, are there any questions? I think I had saw Vice President Spatafor. Pardon? Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? Councilmember Garza.
Thank you. How often do you need to renew your library cards?
Uh, it's every four years. Yep, so, but if you go into a Foster or a South Lansing Branch, they might make you renew it during these months, because again, we do have that competition, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there, Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question about your services and the location. Sure. I've been to the South Side. That place is always packed, and it's every age group you can imagine, from small right up to senior citizen. It's very impressive, and a lot of my neighbors use the Foster one. But what I, what I'm wondering about particularly these programs that really pique my interest, the Girls in Coding and those types of things, what do you have available for the children on the north side of the city? And I'm, I'm thinking specifically about my constituents that live in the Hildebrand Housing Complex and Turner Street and that area. Is there anything in that area for those children, for those types of opportunities?
For a program like the Girls Who Code program, that was one that we set up by reaching out and visiting with Sexton High School. So, if there is any, any community partners that we could have to get into your community where there might be not a library in close vicinity, feel free to reach out to me, and we can set something up. But also, it would, if it's in a library location, it would be one of our three library locations that would be the most convenient.
And these, and these children have no way to get to those locations.
We are working with the Parks and Rec to come out to Mount Vernon and Hildebrand this summer, every Tuesday and Wednesday throughout the summer. So, we will be in Hildebrand and Mount Vernon this summer.
Okay, because to me, and those services are critical for those children, absolutely critical. And, you know, on Saturday morning and different things, that, that's their hope. So, you know, I, I just am not hearing anything for that vast area of the city.
Sure. And, and that's a goal of ours for 2019, is to kind of look in, in what would be a library desert and areas that might not have access and transportation is, is an issue, and to work with community partners to get into those areas. So, if you know of a community partner and know of an area like that, please reach out to us.
Well, I know in Hildebrand, they actually have a, a room, a building that has computers. I can guarantee you, I'm not going to be reaching out to community partners because I just don't have time.
Sure.
But I would encourage you to do that.
Sure.
And I do know that, at least at Hildebrand, they do have a building that would be a good space for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Any other questions? Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, you do have an active Friends of Library group, right?
Correct, yeah.
Do you, do you have any kind of annual report on the, you know, what the community outreach and the fundraising efforts have looked like for that group, or, or no?
Their, their fundraising is mostly through the Book Borough, which is in the basement of the Downtown Library, where they take weeded books and donated books and sell them. So, that is primarily where they get their money. They have no other fundraising that they do currently. But they do, I mean, they, if you attend a meeting, you could get their information. I don't have it on hand as far as what they have in their, in their bank accounts, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. How much of your operating budget comes from the district-wide millage?
Uh, for us, 90%, yeah, a little over 90%.
90%?
Yep. We get some federal funds, some state aid funds, but again, the vast majority comes from our, the operating millage that goes out to the voters.
Okay. Any final questions? All right, I see no final questions. So, we want to thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us.
For your presentation and answering questions on the TIF as well. Thank you.
Sure.
With that, next we have is a resolution on reappointments. These are various boards with reappointments for the Public Service Board, the Downtown Inc., the Lansing Entertainment, no, should, LDFA? Oh, the Finance Authority, yes. And Michigan Avenue Authority and the Parks Board. Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I move the resolution with the reappointments that you just listed. Those include Zoe Alstrom, Jason Wilks, James Tischler, Brian McGrane, and Elaine Barr.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. This will be on June 10th, on the council meeting. Next, we have a discussion on the Scott Garden transplant and new landscaping. So, I see we have people from the Board of Water and Light, from the Parks Department. If you would come up to the table, we would appreciate... would come up to the table, we would appreciate that. As always, make sure that the green light is shining. As you have heard, Brett, there have been discussions from the public about the garden material that was removed from Scott Gardens and the transplanting of that material or new material into the newly formed Scott Gardens. So, if you could address that for us, we would appreciate it. And if council members have questions, we might stop you in between.
Certainly. And.
Green light on?
Green light is on.
Okay.
Plant rescue, as far as when we started to move plants from the Sunken Garden into Cooley Garden and the beds there at Cooley, that began in the fall of 16. As it was mentioned, the peonies didn't survive, but 99% of the plants did survive. And all of the bricks from the Sunken Garden were moved over in a fashion that we call Brick by Brick. That was all documented as far as the move. The walls are now placed on a frost-free foundation, and we did also.
I'm going to stop you real quick. Sorry about that. In your packet, you will see there's a map as well as other documentation, council members. All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
And so, the joints were all mortared, and that is, gives us the foundation there for the wall that you see around the outside. And also, there is a lower wall on the inside as well. Holes were then placed, and these are holes in the wall that were already there as far as for the sedum that was mentioned earlier as well. And then, beginning in November of 2017, meetings took place between the garden club members who were responsible for the Scott Sunken Garden. And then also, we brought in our Cooley Garden Master Gardener volunteers, along with current city staff and former city staff that worked in this area. That was along with the Board of Water and Light and consultants. We all began meeting in November of 2017. The committee took this opportunity to redesign the garden. As you know, with gardeners, oftentimes you don't want to have the same product year after year after year. And it was also an opportunity, again, with the site where it was explained that we had full sun in this area. That led to some redesign, again, by this group that was collected here with input from the garden club members who were responsible for the Scott Sunken Garden. The goal was to add more color, and again, obviously have those plants that are able to survive in full sun. The USDA rates zones for planting, we were in Zone 4. We now changed to a Zone 5. So, the climate has changed for plantings as well, and this was noted by our master gardener that we have on staff now, and discussion on that took place as well.
Could you explain the difference between the two zones?
In terms of temperature, I cannot. What I can tell you is it's a warmer zone, which allows us to plant plants that were generally planted further south, and we're now able to plant those in this climate that we have here. Do we think that we're going to get to a Zone 6? Probably not in my lifetime, but there was a change in that. So, you know, we're able to, we're able to plant plants here according to our gardener that we weren't able to plant years ago.
Okay.
So, over 450 shrubs, annuals, perennials, spring and summer bulbs were planted in this area and in the new Scott Sunken Garden here. So, we are very happy with the amount of plants that are in there. We think that it will fill the space. Obviously, those are going to grow over the years, and we anticipate within four or five years, we will definitely be reducing some of that because of the size that will come with some of those plants as they grow. The site has, the design was, on the north, to have more of the yellow-colored flowers, on the south, to have more of the pink, on the east, to be the blues and purples, and on the west, to be the reds. So, you will see those colors when these are in bloom. It was also documented with this group as far as what time of year those flowers will be blooming. And there was a chart or a calendar put together with that to show when those flowers are going to be blooming, so we could see that throughout the season. As far as the materials, again, 99% of them were saved and are in, they're either in the Sunken Garden or they're in the Cooley Gardens right next door. And we did have that opportunity to make some changes. So, over 50% of the actual plants that were in there are still the same. But, again, I want to emphasize that this group had a lot of people in it, including the garden club members that were really looking to make some changes with the format and the design for that. We are adding in markers, as far as, 10 markers will be on site to describe.
Go ahead.
Good.
It's a wild moose out there. Go ahead.
So, 10 markers will be on site there, basically describing a lot of the history of the site, not only the garden, but really the area as far as Rio Town, as far as Malcolm X, as far as the Sunken Garden, as far as what the substation is, really educating folks when they come in there. So, there will be 10 markers on the site to be able to do that. There is parking, very accessible parking there, right at the end of Capitol that will serve as parking, not only for the Sunken Garden site, but also for Cooley Gardens. The connection between those two gardens, we're very happy with. I respectfully disagree with the noise. I think the noise at the other site is greater than where it is now, but did we do decibel testing before and decibel testing after? No. But what I can tell you is, it is a very nice area there, right along the river, right connected to the Cooley Gardens. And we're very proud of the fact of the groups that were here, put together to talk about this, the move that took place, the involvement of the BWL. I forgot to introduce you, but Brina Pugh is here from the Board of Water and Light as well. And we're very proud of this, and we're looking forward to opening this. It is still in construction right now, and there's still, it's been a very difficult year for construction. When you think of the late start of the spring with the amount of rain that we have had, it has been a difficult construction year. And that translates into the plantings and the garden as well. And we have had, we have had a great group that has been in this for a long time, and we're looking forward to the opening.
Questions? I guess my first question would be, then, you had mentioned that there were 450 bulbs, plantings, and that. How much of that 450 are actually from what was part of the Sunken Garden?
So, what was part of the Sunken Garden? You have around 50% of the stuff from the original into the current.
And then, the balance of that, is that going to stay in the Cooley Garden?
Correct.
Okay. Are there other questions? Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam President. So, this is not exactly Sunken Gardens, but I'll just notice all of the power players of the Parks Administration and the board here. It's just about the tree trimming, stump removal, and you don't have to answer anything, but if someone could send me an email on what we're going to do, if anything, about Colonial Village and others who had their tree and their stump, just because I promised I'd get an answer. And I'm sorry, but that's just the fourth ward, fourth barrel.
I can speak to that, though, if you want to answer right now. We have been in talks with Colonial Village. We still haven't had a one-on-one meeting with them. We're waiting for their follow-up on that. So, we've been in contact with them, and we'll get you an answer as soon as we have one.
The last we had known, Councilmember Jackson, there was supposed to be a meeting with the Administration and the Board of Water and Light to figure out how they were going to resolve that. So, Samantha, did that meeting happen?
I'm not sure. I was not in it, so I'd have to go back and double-check.
Okay. All right. So, we'll try to make sure that at the June 10th Committee of the Whole, we have some answers on that for you. Okay? Councilmember Garza?
Thank you. So, was there any extra additional costs for the Sunken Gardens, and if so, who did that, who paid for that?
The project overall, yes. I mean, there's significant cost when you're talking about moving of the walls, when you're talking about, you know, irrigation for the site. That was all part of the project, and that was all part of the Board of Water and Light's portion of this. When you're talking about the interpretive signs and everything that took place there, yes, there was significant improvements that took place in this area, and that was all part of the project cost.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Other questions? Okay, I think that answers some of the questions that the public had on what percentage of the plants are actually being used, the fact that, it's my understanding then, that you're saying that the plant, the new plantings that are there were paid for by the Board of Water and Light. Is that correct? Not only the construction, but the new plants?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So, with that, we want to thank you for being here, and if there's any questions that we hear from the public, we'll follow back up with you. Thank you. All right. That takes us into the General Fund Report, third quarter report, and the vacancy factor. And in your packet, you have both of those. And I first want to thank Angie and Linda for getting us the vacancy factor before the meeting, giving us a chance to take a look at it. So, first want to thank you for that. And we'll start off with Angie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, tonight I'm here to talk about the current fiscal year as opposed to the next fiscal year, which we've been talking about quite a bit. This is the quarter that just ended, not just ended, it actually ended a little bit ago, March 31st. That would be the third quarter of the current fiscal year. Our fiscal year goes from July 1st to June 30th. So, in looking at the status of the General Fund, which is our largest fund, at the end of the third quarter, basically revenues were a little bit behind where we expect them to be. Expenditures were well within the targets expected, and I'll go over the report a little bit in more depth. The report is made up of three pages. The first two are basically a narrative of the third page. When we look at revenues, we want to kind of benchmark against what are the expectations at this time of the year. Not all the revenues are received in equal increments throughout the year. Property taxes, I'd like to use that as an example, as you know, because we receive those all basically at the beginning of the fiscal year, as opposed to receiving those throughout the fiscal year. So, we take a look at the trend over the past three years of each of our major revenue categories, and we track against that. So, under those revenues, property taxes were within range, just slightly behind prior years. That wasn't anything that's really of concern in terms of tracking that. Income tax revenues, very large revenue source for us, I should say, property taxes are about 31% of our general fund revenues. Income tax is about 30% of our general fund revenues, another very large source. And the collection rate through March 31st, we benchmark at about 58%, and we are about 58.8%. So, a little bit above our benchmark there. State revenue sharing for the first, or sorry, for the third quarter was about 53.9% collected compared to prior year's averages of about 52.6%. Licenses and permits, when you look at those just off the cuff, so to speak, it looked like it was quite a bit below the benchmark, 37% versus about 54% from prior years. However, something that really skewed the revenues was last year, the introduction of the timing with the medical marijuana licenses. So, if you remove that from the trend, really the benchmark becomes about 42.8% as opposed to our collection of 37%. So, that puts it in much more range. So, we're still a little bit behind in license and permits, our revenue collections, but keep in mind that general fund revenues, license and permits only account for 1.5% of all general fund revenues. Charges for services, we're also slightly behind, 64.1% compared to 66.8%. Fines and forfeitures, as we've been talking about for the other two quarters as well, we have definitely seen a, those lagging behind the prior year benchmarks, and those have been due to, as we've talked about in the other two quarters as well, collections for penal cases and civil filing fees. Return on equity payments, we received our first one from Board of Water and Light in December. We will receive the second installment later this month, actually. And so, that was 49.1% compared to 51.8% in prior years. Interest and other revenue categories take up a very small portion of our revenues. And generally, those were, I believe those were pretty much on target, I think. Yeah, the interest and rents were pretty much on target, and the other revenues were slightly behind, but nothing to be conservative against, because that's a very small portion of the budget.
Before we get into expenditures, does anyone have any question on the revenue factor? Any questions on the revenues? Looking at the fines and forfeitures portion of it, have we met with the courts? What are, what are we looking at?
The deficiencies are the, when the District Court came before in terms of the budget for 2020, I think they discussed that a bit in terms of the penal case revenues and the civil filing revenues. I know those have been affected by some recent court decisions and such. I believe in terms of the penal case. Civil filing, I don't, off the top of my head, for the reason for that.
Okay. Jim, do you have any follow-up on that from your office that you're aware of?
Other than caseloads and the variation in the caseloads, no.
Okay.
But the judges, you know, there are the Supreme, there are cases up in the Supreme Court concerning the ability of the local trial courts to assess costs.
Right.
The judges are aware of that, and that may be a factor in the year change.
All right. Thank you. All right. If no questions on the revenues, Angie, if you'd go through the expenditures?
Okay. Similarly, but a little different from the revenue, when we look at those trends, we look at, a lot of our expenses actually are driven by timing of payrolls. There's other things that we know that, timing-wise, to expect in terms of expenditures for the year. So, we benchmark against that pattern, so to speak. As of March 31st, we were within, as I mentioned, those budgetary targets. We were at 70.4% compared to overall 73.4%. On the third page, it has all the numbers. When you look, you know, break out department by department, all the departments were well, were within their budgetary targets as of March 31st, with the exception of Clerk's Office, and that had to do with the elections. Now, fast forward a little bit, you will see a budget amendment coming before you, actually will be introduced this next Monday. And in that, we will spread what we're going to talk about in just a minute, the vacancy factor. You will see a proposal to increase the Clerk's budget for that reason, because of the election. But as well, we are also adding to that, even though police was, Police Department was very close to their target. was very close to their target, we are projecting that we will need a budget amendment due to some front-loading that is gonna be occurring. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
In, in the Clerk's Office, aren't we going to be reimbursed for the school district election?
Yes, we're gonna, yeah. So, in the budget amendment, you'll see an addition of revenues by about $75,000, offsetting the amounts. Yep.
All right. Are there any other questions on the revenue, the expenditures, excuse me? Any questions on the expenditures? Can you give us a quick idea on the Police Department, what you believe that amount is and the front-loading that we're gonna be adding to that?
It was either 200 or 250,000.
And that equates to how many officers for front-loading?
I, I think it was either five or eight. I can't, I don't recall quite.
If you could get us that number, I'd appreciate it. Okay. No questions on that? All right. That takes us, did you have anything else on, on this that you wanted to bring forward on the expenditures or revenues that you needed to let us know? Okay. So, that takes us to the vacancy factor. And did you want to start off with that, and then we'll turn it over to Linda?
Sure. Yep. So, the vacancy factor report is a budgetary tool, as we've talked about before. During the year, or the beginning of the year, I should say, when we put together the budget, we know that there'll be vacancies, and we know that people leave from time to time, and that there'll be a little gap in, in the time that those positions can be filled. So, we do, so as not to over, over-budget, so to speak, we do factor in what we call a vacancy factor and within the budget. But we don't know where those, where those vacancies are gonna occur during the year. So, it's done in one lump sum, and then throughout the year, then we monitor to see how we are. Now, we certainly don't hold positions open to meet, meet that, but for, for that reason, because we have this amount budgeted for vacancies, we do need to monitor and see how we're coming, because if, if we're gonna have less than what we were expected, then we need to make other budgetary adjustments. So, this is the third quarter vacancy factor report. This only applies in terms of the vacancy factor, really only applies to the general fund, and the general fund had a $500,000 amount budgeted for this current fiscal year. As of this point in the year, and I should say, March 31st point in the year, we would expect about 375,000 to be the, the benchmark, so to speak. So, we would have concern if it was less than that in terms of budgetary adjustments, and we are well in excess of that amount at 868,000.
Vice President Spatafor.
Thanks, Angie. So, I have, the first year, I shook my head just pretending to know what this was. The second year, I kind of understood it. But so, if it's less than, it means that we've hired more folks than you anticipated we'd hire, correct? So, if the number goes down, that means we've hired, that we've filled more vacancies than it was anticipated when we passed the budget? Is that correct?
So, you mean if the number was less?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. If the number was less, that means either there weren't as many people that left, or yeah, I would say that you had fewer vacancies than you expected.
Okay. And at what point does it become a budgetary problem? If it's like zeroed out? Is that when it's a problem?
If we, in doing this report here, if we felt that this point in the year, at, at March 31st, we felt that 375,000 was the benchmark, and we were at, say, only 200,000, then we'd have to look at, do we need to make some budgetary adjustments?
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions for Angie on this? Just a couple of points I wanted to, to make is, we have been working with the administration and with HR, and Eric is going to be working with them to get a metric spreadsheet to work with the offset by contract. We've gotten a lot more information on here this time than what we've had before, but we are still looking for that information, and that's something that, that they are going to be working on and, and getting us that. Linda was out of the office, and so we weren't able to get that for this particular meeting, but by the time we have our next quarter, we'll have that information, but we might be able to do some, a presentation partway between now and that next quarter, so that you'll understand what that is. So, I'll turn it over to Linda. Is the green light on?
It is on. Oh, no, no, it's on.
Eric.
Okay. Good evening. So, in front of you, you do have the vacancy report. I think that as we go through, perhaps I should just take the questions that you have. I think it outlines pretty much where we are and what positions we still have open and what have been filled, so...
Are there questions for, for Linda on this? I guess some of the questions that, that I would have is, when we look at these positions and the fact that we are, we had looked at budgetarily that it would be roughly 500,000, and we're already into the third quarter, and we're up to 868,000. The obvious question is, how are we dealing with our hiring practices? Is this a matter of not getting the applicants applying? Is this a matter of not getting the qualified applicants? What are some of the reasons that, that you're seeing out there from your department, Linda?
Okay. I will say, for, a year ago, when I entered into the Shore Administration, I believe that there were a great number of vacancies, and while there are a number of issues that HR faces in not being able to hire individuals, I believe that we've done a pretty good job moving forward, and that the HR staff is working very, very hard to fill the positions. The, as I've brought during the budget presentation to you, there is a software issue, not an issue, it's, I believe that if we brought in a new software, which we are working on, things could be smoother in our hiring process. In some of the areas, such as electrical engineers and public service, it's been difficult to fill those positions, and we just don't have the qualified, we don't have individuals applying, and that's not because we're not out recruiting and going to different places and various publications, it's that we don't have the applicants applying. So, those are all factors.
On here, there are a number that say on hold by department. What does that, what does that mean?
The ones that are on hold by department, HR, I have asked directors to go through their departments with the openings that they have, and to prioritize the ones that they, that are really, really needed. So, the ones that are on hold doesn't mean that they're not going to be filled, it means that others ahead of them, other positions were more pertinent or more urgent to that department to be filled.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking at, just one that I'm picking out, and...
Okay.
Unfortunately, the city attorney's sitting right here. The city attorney has a legal advisor that is on here, and that's been vacant since June of 2011. I think you also have a police secretary, oh, I see, that was just Phil, no, that's not the one. Yeah. Police administrative specialist, and that has been developing a new job description, and that's been vacant since 2011.
Okay. I can speak to the city attorney's legal advisor, and I'm pleased to tell council that that was filled on April the 6th.
Great.
As far as the...
Because, just so that we understand, we are looking at March numbers, so, thank you.
Correct. For the police administrative specialist, I am personally working with LPD to develop that new job description that has, you are correct, it has been open for quite some time and been filled by contract, but we're moving forward.
Okay. All right. So, some of these, because we are looking at March, could already be filled?
Correct.
Okay.
And I can, let me see, finance assessing, the residential appraiser, offset by contract, that was filled on March 23rd. Finance assessing administrative assistant, that's, says on hold by the department, but that's currently active. We are, that is posted, and we are in the process of interviewing. Legal assistant for six. The ones that you see are open for public service facilities, when I entered in, in 2018, there were a number of positions that were open in public service. So, we have been working very, very hard in filling those positions, and because they are on hold by the department does not mean that HR is not in communication with the hiring managers and seeing what their priorities are.
As, as an example, we have in public service, an electrician technician, and that has been vacant since 2006.
And that would be one that would be problematic. We have not been successful in, in receiving applicants for that position. And again, it's not because we're not, you know, we're working with our unions, with different publications throughout, and we're just not, I'll take ideas, any suggestions.
Councilmember Garza's gonna have some.
Thank you. So, what is the, the offer as far as the position? How much money are you guys offering for that position?
You know, I'd have to look to be, to give you a specific number, but I will tell you that it is lower than other places. We have done a, a survey, and that, that's part of the problem.
Are there other questions on the vacancy? Do we see any other questions? Seen none. We want to thank both Linda and Angie. Yes, Angie.
I just wanted to mention, in the budget amendment that you'll see coming forward, we will then do what we call spreading the vacancy factor. So, when we budget that one lump number in the budget, this will then spread it to the various departments that had the, so I just wanted to mention that, when you see that budget amendment coming forward, you'll see that.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Linda, I can sometimes hear the frustration in your voice. I think you're doing a really good job. You've done a lot in this past year and a half, so we appreciate it.
I appreciate that comment, but I really try and hide the frustration.
Thank you. All right. With that, that takes care of that item. Thank you very much, and I believe, that does it, then. We have everything taken care of. So, at this moment, we will adjourn, and in five minutes, we'll start the council meeting. We're adjourned.